Go on.
Okay, it's sometime in December. December 13th, reference work session. Our primary purpose today is to meet with Normandu Associates regarding the Nineteen Mile Brook Baseline Environment Assessment. Come on over. We also have our Chairman of our Conservation Commission.
I'd like to point out that this meeting this morning wasn't required and was offered by Normandu. Oh, we're taking the quality of the final document and it won't be a presentation. It's tough to ask to ask the question. They plan to produce a final copy for December 31st and then offer to do a presentation after that to the public. If we find issues that are beyond the scope of the original contract, then we'll have to consider financing additional studies to get those answers.
That's about right. So we just wrapped this up. I mean, I have been scrambling to get this finished for you guys. It's a lot of work. Turned into a slightly larger report than I thought it would, but we think it's solid and the conclusions that we draw here, I think, are where we thought we were headed with this. But we want to give you guys the chance to weigh in on it before we finalize everything and wrap this up and present it to anyone and everyone who's interested in learning about Nineteen Mile Brook. So if you'll read through it, you'll notice there are some editorial mistakes in here. It's not quite as polished as it will be in the final, but the content should be there. And we just want to give you guys the opportunity to review it with us.
So I guess I'll start. You had some increases in conductivity and chloride, I think was one of them?
Yes. Starting with, so water chemistry is where we're seeing, you know, obvious signals from a wastewater discharge here. And chloride is conservative. It doesn't get assimilated, it doesn't bind with soil, so it passes through from a point of discharge into the environment and basically cycles. So yes, we would expect to see that if you have any sort of wastewater discharge, that that would show up in the stream. Sure enough, we see it. So in the reference reach where you have a kind of pristine background condition, you have very low levels of chloride and specific conductance. And then when you hit the area of the discharge, it does jump up. And we saw that in our file reviews. It's out there in the data that's been collected for the discharge permit compliance. So we do see that and we compared that to state water quality standards and it's well within the chronic and acute criteria for that.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
When you measure those things, I guess I'm going back to my high school chemistry class. Is it measured in percent of volume?
It's a concentration. So you have parts per million. So for chlorides, we measure that milligrams per liter. And that's a concentration. So it's not a volume, it's not a mass.
I want to be fair here because if the concentration is the way you measure, whether it's 100 gallons or a million gallons, that it's a mathematical. However, if you're talking about total quantity of phosphorus, for example, well, obviously 100,000 gallons would be more phosphorus total standing by itself than in 10 gallons, right? Or am I oversimplifying or do I misunderstand something?
No, you've got that. So you can look at things in terms of mass or in terms of concentration. And where they typically set water quality standards for what we would measure in a stream or a lake, it's a concentration. And that's more important effects in the environment than a total mass. Now, there are situations like for a discharge where they could limit a total mass of something that's being released, but I don't believe that's in their discharge permit here.
Thank you. That answers my question.
So the nitrate, I mean, I'm seeing a tripling on that. Is that still within?
Well, nitrate does not have a numerical state water quality standard. They have a discharge permit limitation on that. So they have, do not exceed value for their effluent discharge. And they need that. But in terms of impacts in the stream, we don't have a numerical standard that we can say you either pass or fail here. So what we dig up is recommendations. EPA has guidelines for what they recommend you have in the stream. So a threshold for stream health, basically. And I think it was what, .37 milligrams per liter, if I remember correctly. So we do see exceedances of that. I'll go to the chart on page 37. That has summary of all the laboratory measurements we have. So we'll have nitrate listed in the third column there. And so you'll see the first station, dash O1, that's our reference station, so unimpacted. And then Station 2 and WP2, which is Witten Pond. Those stations are all at and below the discharge. So you definitely see increases and we expected that. Nitrate is a component of wastewater effluent, but it's highly mobile. It doesn't, again, it doesn't bind. So phosphorus is very sticky, it binds in soils. And most of our phosphorus in the environment is bound up in soils in seven particles. Nitrate is very mobile, it doesn't stick. So it moves until it's uptaken by something. And once it goes into groundwater, there's very little that's going to happen to transform that or consume it until it's released into a surface water. Now, surface water is nitrogen is not typically a limiting nutrient, so it doesn't have a profound effect on freshwater systems. It's more, once it gets into the ocean is where nitrogen has a larger effect on the environment.
Yeah, you need the nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus in order to have an algae bloom or a cyanobacteria bloom. In freshwater, phosphorus tends to be the limiting factor. And when phosphorus gets to a critical point, then the algae blooms can occur and you get dissolved oxygen reductions and stuff like that. Nitrogen is a concern in salt waters, basically. It's a limiting factor of salt waters, but not for freshwater.
So we keep an eye on nitrogen. We definitely see an increase here, but in terms of whether there's impacts from that, I think probably unlikely. And then phosphorus is complicated because it takes very, very little phosphorus to cause impacts. And so we see elevated values here. If you look at, the fourth column is our total phosphorus. For reference, and again, there's no state numerical standard for phosphorus in freshwater. They have guidelines for what's considered different trophic states in a lake or a pond. And those thresholds are at 8, 12, and 28 micrograms per liter, which would be .008, .012, and .028. So by comparison, we're in order of magnitude or more higher than that across the board for phosphorus. And including in our reference station. So seeing the reference station with values of, say, 160, 190, 62, 10, and 110, all compared to a threshold of 8. Or 10 is the EPA standard. And we're way over that. So it's not a surprise that once you hit a pond, like Witten Pond, that that stuff is going to cause a lot of excess growth. And we saw that. We saw a lot of plant life in pond, algae. I did not see that documented in the O8 report, but we think it's probably pretty utrophic at this point.
And the significant difference between the May testing and the August and September testing, what do you attribute that to?
I mean, that could be something as simple as rainfall and just surface runoff diluting the concentration in phosphorus. You'll see higher concentrations of-
Did you measure the flow?
We have stage, but we did not do a flow study here. So stage is a surrogate for flow. It'll come up, and that's just the water's surface elevation at one site. So we generally know whether flows coming up or down with that. And then we could look at the nearest stream gauge just to have an idea of what flows are like in this area, but not specifically to that stream.
And did you get any reports from Wolfboro? I mean, I know they're just turning this thing back on, or maybe they've turned it all back on. I don't know. What their discharge rate was?
They submit monthly reports that are a daily discharge volume. And we didn't pull those for this, but that's something we can look at that-
I mean, if that affects the numbers, I don't know.
I think it would. I think it would affect base flows. And what we would need for that is stream gauging. So we'd have to know what the volume of water in the stream was. And then we would have to know what the fraction of that coming from the discharge is. So that's kind of a separate study from what we're looking at.
The 2008 study that they do on?
We did that separately. We did a flow study after the baseline study.
So you've got to have a baseline of what the stream was naturally pushing out. So we at least have some place to start.
Right.
So if there was 200,000 gallons a minute and it's gone to 300,000, you know the 100,000 is the RIB pushing them. I just pick up numbers out of the-
Oh, yeah. So we have a general idea for what the percent contribution across a range of flows is. We just don't know it specifically to this study.
Right.
But we could look at it qualitatively, say, oh, well, they weren't discharging during the month of August. So we know that-
These values drop.
Right. I would also make the assumption that the disturbance on the site, which I think is considerable, there are stormwater effects. So whatever input is from stormwater, it would affect these numbers. And it's going to be important for us to monitor their management in the future and what they've done to, or what they plan to do for remediation.
Cheap you got it.
Every additional disturbance they do-
Cheap seats, you got it.
I'm sorry?
Larry has a contribution.
Oh, okay, sorry.
The question I would have is, so the numbers that you see for total phosphorus in particular in May, and then they're substantially lower in August, wouldn't that be reflective of the seasonality? In other words, you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of production going on, you've got warmer temperatures, you've got a lot of activity, biotic activity in the water. So if there's phosphorus, it's being, it's being bound up pretty quickly because of the vegetation, either algae or plant life. And you didn't see that in May because things haven't ramped up yet. You don't have full, full growth.
Well, you didn't see that because we had a snowstorm, cloud roads, May 2nd.
Is that right?
And so obviously the length of the winter affects-
So you don't intend to do, or it's not in your mission to do any testing in the winter?
No, you typically want to do this during the most stressed out conditions, which are high temperature, low base stream flow. Flows are always higher in the winter. I mean, the targeted timeframe is really July through August into September. I don't see a lot of value in monitoring over the winter. You can get an earlier start in the spring, which I think is as informative as doing winter monitoring. In terms of recommendations, we haven't quite gotten there yet. You know, looking at the phosphorus question that you have, I think the answer is it's complicated. Nutrients go through very complicated cycles and I don't think I could just say, well, it's, primary production is higher in August and that's why you see more turnover now.
It would be a factor, though.
There's a lot of factors. And the simplest one is simply whether it's raining or not, you know, whether flows are higher or lower. And then there's other contributing factors as well. But just look at the numbers for what they are. They're high. We don't see very low backgrounds of phosphorus here, so-
But they're high upstream of the-
And that's the point.
The water coming in from the infiltration basin.
We just think in this setting, you have higher phosphorus. And that's not unusual. I mean, what's unusual is to have streams that are way down at these very low background concentrations. And this is not necessarily an effect of any one thing. It could just be the geology.
That was true in 2008 as well.
We saw lower phosphorus in 2008 as a, as a single sample. So I think it was collected from four stations once and they were down at, what, 12? 12 versus our readings of 10 up to 550. But if you look at the data that was reported as part of the discharge permit compliance reporting, it's all over the place. I mean, they've got phosphorus. And if you attach a trend line to it, which is not necessarily meaningful, it actually goes down with time. It's not coming up. But if we just look at our two sample points, 2008 and 2019, you know, it's up. But that just could be part of the natural signal here, the down.
Yeah, we don't know how that works until we go forward. And we've got to have a little more information than two dots. We can draw a straight line between them.
And there's a large number of phosphorus samples that have been collected as part of the discharge reporting. And so there's, there's data out there in terms of what you do with it, that there's any number of things. But is it worth doing more with that? So if we have high phosphorus, what does that mean? Well, it means that this little Witten Pond is probably trapping a lot of that and is, you know, going utrocanic. Yep. But in the stream, you know, you're not going to see, well, we're not seeing the effects from that. This is attributable to Lakewood-Pasaki. You know, you could look at, what was the implication of that? Well, there's a lot of streams that dumped to Lakewood-Pasaki with high phosphorus. I mean, that's not atypical. In terms of how you address it, is it watershed issue? It's not a highly developed stream. So typically, if we saw high nutrient levels, we'd say, oh, it's non-point source pollution. This is coming from all the development in the watershed. It's not a very developed stream. So I, this is just a hunch, but I think it's probably just coming out of the natural cycling of what's in the stream there.
This subject was considered in light in 2008, trying to get at these answers. And it got more and more expensive to find out what the inputs are, what the flow rates are.
The more they begin to do, the higher the cost, right?
Yeah. So, and the time issue of getting started. You want to measure flows from different sources, then you've got to put in gauging systems. So 2008 was a compromise on what we thought we could get done in the timeframe. And, you know, there was a need to get it done before the inputs were, would begin.
Right.
So, and then repeating in 2019, it wouldn't, it would be additional information, but it wouldn't be comparable to 2008 if we did it differently.
Right, you need to collect the same stuff in the same place.
Plus, we know a lot. Normandu knows a lot about-
And we don't have any testing that was during that period of system failure when the RIB went southbound. So we don't know what happened then.
I mean, other than what has been reported for the permit itself, and they require monthly testing, weekly testing, they have a lot of conditions for monitoring of that permit. So and there's-
But they're not monitoring the stream or just where their outflow is. They're not going downstream.
They do. They have sampling points all up and down Nineteen Mile Brook. They have sampling points in all these little seeps that are coming out of the hillside. And, you know, we looked at that in the file review back in the winter. You know, it's what you would expect. There's high levels coming off the hillside there. The in-stream concentrations are lower. But in terms of picking out an event and saying, was there a measurable effect from this particular event? And we haven't looked at that. It might be a challenge to do that, too.
But I don't see any, any way around not doing the same thing again. We have to get some kind of a book of records on what's happening there. And just doing a study in 2008 and then doing another one in 2018, I'm not sure that really accomplishes anything but giving us-
What we got out of this are some pretty valuable metric data. So, you know, you can say, oh, there might be an exceedance of a water quality standard due to this here and there. But what is the effect? And a lot of times, that's how you evaluate, you know, an effect on the environment is what's happening to the biological community. So there's organisms that live in the stream that are very sensitive to pollutants, to change. So if we have 10 years of data, or 10 years of gap between data sets, that's a great pair of comparisons. And that's what we did with the macronovirgins and the fish community and the habitat assessment. And so if there is any real effect from pollution or change to the stream environment, or if it was getting silted up, you know, we would see that in the ventic community. Ventic is the stuff that lives in the stream substrate.
Right.
And there's hundreds or thousands of organisms that live there. And we grab a sample and we pick through and count every single one that's in there. And then we run an analysis on there. And they assign different values to different species that live there. Some are tolerant of high levels of pollutants. Some are so sensitive that they die off immediately if you have a change in pH. And so we add all of those up and distill that into a number. And if you compare them, so we did that 2008, 2019, the species composition is equally or more healthy than it was 11 years ago.
So it probably happened.
Yeah, and there's trout everywhere up there. And they're breeding and living there. They're not stocked fish. They're-
Yes, they are.
Well, they are, but what we're seeing in the stream are naturally reproducing fish. The stocked trout- Well, right. But the ones that we caught weren't those trout.
That was a question I was going, I had asked. Because I think you, I don't know if fishing game fin clips or their fish, I don't think they do that anymore. But to, the question I had was, can you distinguish between hatchery-raised trout versus native trout? In some cases, I think you could because one of your biologists said that at least the bigger fish, they show signs of stress because they're in a tank being raised and they keep bumping their, their heads into the, trying to get out or something.
Their eyes are different, too. Their eyes are different.
There's some, there's some differences. So I asked that question and that was the response I got. And they do list the size range that they distributed to the Witten Pond. But they, there were at least four period times in 2019 that they stocked Witten Pond in some various points in the main stream.
And I've asked that question, too, because I was skeptical. I said, are you sure these aren't stocked fish that you're catching up there?
Yeah.
And from what they can tell, based on the range of sizes and age classes they see, is that they're naturally reproducing there. That they have the habitat, they have the water temperature they need. So they need cool water, they need lots of oxygen in the water, and they need a closed forest canopy over the stream. And they'll stay if they have that. So we think that they're native fish. I mean, our fish guy told me that's what they are. I'm not going to argue with him, but I can ask him to back that up a little bit more. But either way, they're, they're happy. I mean, they are thriving there.
There are a lot of good studies that show that fish populations in streams are a product of, instructor of the stream. Fish just can't swim against the current all the time. Have to sit in a little eddy. And they also feed, and the size of that eddy depends, is important to the size of the fish. Second, hatchery-raised trout don't have the practice to displace those native. So they're out there trying to find a spot where they're not going to wear out all their energy. And they're also hungry. So they get caught pretty fast. And most people, those trout fishermen know where the stocking points are and they know where the stocking schedule is. So they tend to get in there and get those hatchery fish pretty easily. So I, and looking at, I agree with the size structure of the population. It's unlikely that much of that captured population was stocked fish, in my opinion.
We'll see what we can do to clarify that, strengthen that.
Also, the, it wouldn't be stocking in August when Salem took place. It would be much earlier in the season. And if they didn't get caught, they probably bumped down trees because they couldn't find a home where native fish would let them take over. I think there's a message here, too. Quality is about total, total watershed quality as much as it is one single effect like, like the RIB. When we have a watershed that's well-developed with homes and roads, then the cumulative effect of that development can exceed a hotspot like this. So when we look at our watershed that's been coming up, we should be sensitive to, it's not always the big, the big wolf here that we have to worry about. It's the cumulative effect of all the things that we do, particularly our road systems. I would, in my opinion, that when the breakouts occurred, probably were large spikes that would be above the threshold allowed in the permit. But you had to be measuring in that short period of time when the sediment was flushing out and concentrations were higher than the natural flow, not getting diluted right away. It's a pretty complex thing. I think the way they manage that site in terms of stormwater is probably as important as what they're putting in up at the top of the hill when it comes to that protecting extreme quality there.
All right, so you're going to have the final report to us by when?
I mean, if you guys don't have significant comments or want us to make big revisions or anything, we can get it done pretty quickly. And I, I would plan to work on it next week and have it submitted to you guys before, certainly by the end of the month, which probably means before Christmas.
I think we still have, so Larry and I maybe still have a few more questions.
I've got, I've put together some comments reviewing it. I guess one of the things I was thinking we would see is more information gleaned from the towns reports through New Hampshire DES with respect to the, at least in one respect, the discharges from the RIBs during the time that we, you were sampling. Because the flow study that was done 2008, 2009 did show in low-flow periods that you could reasonably say that a, I think the number off the top of my head was 30% of the flow that was measured is attributable to the discharge.
Okay.
And to know that while we were sampling would be relatable to what some of the conditions we saw, we seen. And to know that while we were sampling would be relatable to what some of the conditions we saw, we seen. The other thing that came to my head, it's probably smaller, was the nitrate information. It's all over the lot in terms of, you had five samples collected over those five days, and three of them are less than. One of them is less than one, one of them is less than point zero five, and the other one is less than point one. That's almost a order of, almost two orders of magnitude difference. And you say, well, we don't have a number. I agree, but they're less than. And so the numbers upstream are clearly better water than they are downstream.
Yes.
There's no question.
For nitrogen.
And for phosphorus. Phosphorus is lower up there than it is downstream, at least the way I read it. And, but they show significant increases downstream. And one of the things I had is, once you conclude based on that, that the RIBs are accelerating the eutrophication of wetland pond. You indicate that it shows some eutrophication, but the numbers for nitrates and phosphorus are up.
I think the fairest thing you can say is that some proportion of phosphorus entering wetland pond is coming from the RIB discharge. We know some proportion is coming from the watershed. I don't know what that breakdown is, and I don't know if it's a reasonable thing to try to proportion it out. Maybe we can, there's different ways to look at those data points. And one of the things that we want to come out of this is more, what is the change at and below the point of discharge? We can look at that in a little bit more depth. I don't have room for a lot of further kind of heavy analysis in this, but I can certainly look at it. And we've got the data, I've got the file data. Dave Ford has offered up all their compliance data. He said, I've got spreadsheets, I can hand that to you. You know, if that's something you want to help out with, is getting your hands on that. We don't have a lot of time before the end of the month to be introducing new analysis here. But I can, I can look at what I've got.
Well, I think maybe, I'm gonna kind of push this forward because I don't really enjoy Friday meetings. You have some recommendations, you and Steve. And I think we need to expect some recommendations from you folks on what next year looks like. Because we have to create a war on it if we're gonna do this again. And if it's gonna change, then let's make some changes. If you need to concentrate on an area that you haven't, like the review of the Wolfborough records, then let's make sure we have that in there. I personally don't think that waiting another ten years to do it again is the most efficacious way to approach this situation. I think getting a number of years of data together, so we've got a real corpus of data makes it a lot easier. I mean, then if we go over four years or five years, whatever, at least we've got a trend. Or if there are trends, we're gonna have two or three years.
Could you use this report to develop an annual survey program? And with an annual report for the critical factors that are in board?
Yeah, you may see parts of this that you don't need to do on an annual basis. We can do every three or four years or whatever.
Well, we don't, right off the top of my head, we don't think the downstream sites are offering up as useful of information as kind of the background station and the discharge station. Because those are very comparable sites in terms of, you know, what they look like from habitat perspective. So they're a great paired study comparison. It's an apples-to-apples comparison, whereas the downstream sites are so different that it's really hard to make those comparisons.
I'd agree, but I'm, I'm agreeing with Larry that I think we need to monitor wetland pond. I mean, if it's gonna go downhill in a big hurry, we need to figure out what's happening there.
And we've talked about that a little bit, because that's something that has come out of this, is what do you do with it? And it's typical. A lot of these little ponds where you build a dam, it doesn't take long before they get gunked up like this and they're
Well, they've been there for quite a while.
Also, to me, the amount of sediment that was lost on the site from the breakouts, and I have to say, from the previous logging, it was not clean logging. It was done around that stream on both sides. A lot of sediment went in the stream, and that probably all stopped in wetland pond. So the muck that's in there, the lack of depth, I would say, is that sediment.
And that's also a source of phosphorus while we're talking about that. So it could be cycled internally, too, when we're seeing high phosphorus in the pond. And most likely, that is a large component of it.
I think that's what I'm hoping for.
But it isn't gonna, I don't know, I'm not gonna say that again. There isn't a logging operation that's been ongoing in the last two or three years. They're claiming that there won't be any more breakouts at the RIB. So if those things have stabilized, I don't think the pond is gonna stabilize at some point, at some level. Because I don't know how phosphorus operates.
What's in there, too?
Yeah, but it does, it's not, is it gonna increase?
Probably.
Based on the runoff problems, or?
It's kind of a tipping point problem. Once it gets a foothold in there, it just keeps cycling and concentrating. But would you agree with that?
There's incremental increases in phosphorus and algebils that would occur on the pond likely.
All right.
Or it just keep getting worse.
So that would line itself towards deployed continuous monitoring. So dropping a dissolved oxygen meter out there to actually verify that. So if it's eutrophic, what you're going to see is this really high oxygen increase during the day. And then at night, it'll crash.
Drop like a rock.
As everything decays and consumes the oxygen. So that's a typical pattern, and it would, you know, confirm that it's eutrophic out there. And that would also explain why there's no fish out there, until they stock it.
All right.
Aeration is one approach for dealing with that kind of situation, correct?
In terms of pond management, I mean, for that size pond, you could do, you could remove all the plant life in there. And there's, that's a separate issue.
Right.
That's another pond.
No.
It'd be difficult to try to aerate that without disturbing a lot of that bottom, which has all the bad stuff stored in it to channel it in the stream. I think that's problematic, really.
Yeah. Or does it matter? I mean, if the pond is essentially dead, does that matter? That's something else to consider, is that it's a trap. It's trapping sediment, it's trapping nutrients, metals, whatever else is stored down there.
I think you could lower the water level, which would turn it into a wetland. Wetland vegetation that would tend to involve that sediment.
Yeah. We talked about that a little bit in terms of, what would you do with that dam? Would you remove?
Well, I mean, if some of these dams are removed and the pond goes away.
Yeah, is that helpful for the downstream chemistry? I don't know.
I think it would be.
Generally, I'm sorry?
Instead of an area of dead water, unoxygenated water, you would have a living wetland with a lot of vegetation, a lot of wetland vegetation. That holds that sediment in place. And it holds stormwater, stormwater within the pond there. And then it'd be really slowly, so instead of getting any big shocks of nutrients downstream, it would basically be held in that pond, and then the wetland vegetation would process a lot of it.
All right. I don't know if you're there to move dams.
No, no. Basically, that pond is a safety net.
We don't own the pond.
If I reduce it, if I melt it right down and reduce it to the bottom line, the pond is
If you turn it to a wetland, it would function that way.
I need to talk to the landowner before you
I had a couple of questions.
We're just conceptualizing now on, you know, how does this issue get dealt with? So this is not, we're not making any decisions for the landowner. We're just gathering a little information and trying to get our arms around. Here's something that's suboptimal at this point. And is there a way forward that will help out and help the whole watershed?
You had some questions, Lloyd?
My observations, it's been a very positive relationship between the Conservation Commission and you folks. You've done other projects in the town, and isn't it nice that we all work together? I guess I'm aiming this toward the Conservation Commission. I noticed on page fifty-two, there was a comment that said there was no September data collection. I'm putting you on the spot, Chairman Wingate, from you, sir. Does that impact this study in your opinion?
I think it's pretty well explained. I think it's a, and it's not something you can just stick without redoing the whole thing. I think there is risk that a, somebody who wanted to downgrade this report could say that that was the most critical period during the whole study to have data missing because the concentration of effluent would be the highest during that period. But, you know, short of doing it all over again, you can't fix that. Because if you just took September data in another year, it wouldn't be applicable to do the, do the rest of the work for the rest of the year to make the comparison of changes through the season. That's my, this is my opinion. Well, Larry, what do you think?
I think the explanation, I had some concerns about it for sure because of the volume issues associated with it. But I think your explanation and your reference to Bear Camp River mimicking, at least in terms of the flow regime, in the sense of Bear Camp River is probably is experiencing similar rain events and climatic conditions as Ninety-Mile Brook. And you didn't see anything major. I think that that's fair. You do have the results that you did from the 2008, '09 study of that time period. There were samples collected there. So yeah, it would have been, it would have been better to have it. But I don't think it's fatal to the report.
My second question, please.
I personally think it's a good report. Things are well explained and accomplish the mission. And the most important data is not that data. What's in the stream, what's living in the stream right now compared to 2008. That's really about what the changes are. You can do all the chemistry we want, but if the creatures live in the stream and how they have responded to over time, it tells the real story, and data is complete.
If we do it again next year, if this is significant statistical difference in a September study next year versus the previous 2008 that we have, then that means that 2019 is wanting for information. If there isn't, then it, I guess, which is everyone's stance.
The next question I have for you two is, you agree with the basic conclusions?
I do.
I'm more quizzical because I was, again, expecting to see more involvement in use of the, in this data review that was done of the Wolfborough stuff. I was anticipating more usage of that in explaining what was going on for 2019 in the background and then as what's going on right now in terms of the discharge. They did have outbreaks. There were additional outbreaks. We were there in July, August, or shortly thereafter. There was an outbreak on the, along the power line, down gradient going towards Wolfborough. And that was reported, Dave Ford reported. So there was an additional outbreak, and there were no, to my knowledge, any massive rainstorms or anything that would have been, would explain that. So they're still issuing, they're trying to manufacture a way of getting that nutrient, that flow into the watershed without any outbreaks. So it's a naturally discharge, to the point that they're going, they're talking about manufacturing the stream bottom with crushed stone so it comes up. So they're in between a rock and a hard place to make sure that that system works because they've got a lot of, Wolfborough has a lot of emphasis on making that thing work.
As I understand it, from the engineers I've talked to, it's a unique engineering issue. I've asked every engineer I know, even ask Wolfborough, where else is this being done from your knowledge? So it's a learning experience for everyone. Next question I have for Conservation
I'd like to add to Larry's and say that, yes, I agree with Larry. I have editorial comments. I assume that the data is handy. And one of my editorial comments was, throw that data in. We did finance a data review in the beginning in order to help set up. I think it is questionable from how we worded the scope of the work, whether that's required or not. But I thought it would be smart, if it's handy, to include that.
No, I agree with that. I will add that back in. I'll put the rib flows in there. I'll work the nutrient discussion a little bit more to look at what we collected with the file review versus what we collected, see if, you know, particularly with respect to trends. I mean, it's hard to come up with a trend based on this because it's very noisy. It's a very noisy data set. It's up, it's down, it's all over the place. But we can build that discussion a little bit more. I agree with you.
I think that story is a noisy issue, as noisy as going on in the land.
Yeah.
And the amount they were injecting in various
Next question I have is, I'll take a step back. At the transfer station, Clay Gallagher's worked very hard that each year when Stan Tech goes in and wait a minute, there's some things that because the site is twenty years old or older, the state doesn't require, and I'll just make up a metal, that you don't have to check every year for copper. It's every three years. Another metal might be every five years. The point is that one year it's four or five thousand dollars for a study. The next year it's fifteen or sixteen thousand. That's the background. In your opinion, committee members, when should the next baseline study be done?
Personally, I think there's a couple of ways to look at this. Unless something changes out there, you could spend a lot of money just to find out the same thing. So I think we need to monitor what's going on out there. For example, just after all the work here, there was another outbreak. That would have been a great time to see what the effect of that outbreak was. But they also got on it right away, so maybe there wasn't an effect. It'd be nice to be able to react to changes. That's my opinion. Otherwise, I think you could spend Otherwise, I think you could spend, you could spend a lot of money just finding out the same thing again.
Well, for instance, with respect to the monitoring, you've already suggested that two of these monitoring sites give you valuable data, the other two, with respect to the impact of the wastewater coming into the system, the other two further downstream, not so much, so...
But you gotta do the upstream one to be able to measure what the meaning of the day is in the downstream one.
Right.
So, you're really talking about three sites, I think.
No, I was talking about one and two, I believe.
Well, one and two are most similar to each other, so they're the easiest to make comparisons between. And then, then you hit Witten Pond right below the second site, which kind of complicates things a little bit. And then below Witten Pond, it's a very different setting. So, the two most valuable stations are the reference reach outside the area of impact and the discharge station. Below that, they're still valuable, but they're a little bit harder to make comparisons with. So, I mean, if you were to prioritize, it's definitely the first two are the highest priority. The third one would be lower priority. Witten Pond itself is almost an independent issue.
There's different ways to do this.
You can make a reasonable argument that we have all the information we need to move forward, not test for another five years. I don't think we have it. I mean, for one, as Larry said, hasn't been a real significant comparison of data to Wolfborough's input, and it's just one season. I mean, it's, there's changes, I mean, whether it's rainfall or snowfall or bear input or whatever, I think we need more than one year's sample. And we have two thousand eight, but I can see creating the next RFP to talk about the two upper stations. And then maybe one test on a lower, below Witten Pond or something like that, and maybe more concentration on trying to correlate the changes to whatever is going on with Wolfborough's input. If there's no correlation, then there's no correlation. But if there is, then we at least know what we're working at. So, the next time we look at this, we may look at that information first and say, okay, they're pushing a lot of stuff in July, we need to test in July or whatever.
So, where would be, would you be thinking about adding a little money to this contract right now, so it's the final report? As their recommendation for further monitoring?
Hopefully their report's gonna have some recommendations.
Yeah, we can produce recommendations. I mean, off the top of my head, you want continuous monitoring because that's going to capture things like an event, if you had a blowout or breakout. That would show up and, you know, having a logger out there watching data all the time. That's something I would do on a recurring basis, maybe every season. The Macklin vertebrae, the in-stream study of Biota, that can wait because that is, that date is more valuable after some time has elapsed, and in this case, it's ten years or less.
We know what it was in oh-eight, we know now what it was in eighteen, nineteen.
Maybe five years later, we'll do it again.
Yeah, and absent a horrific event, the Biota's not gonna change significantly in one season. I'm guessing that you'd pick it up over a little longer interval.
The last question I have is for you folks. Do you have any projects in Wolfborough, where Wolfborough, town of Wolfborough was the client? No.
I don't believe so.
I don't think we do.
Okay, thank you. We don't. Okay, I wanna thank all these people. From my observation, they've worked closely together, mutual communication. I take the point of doing the baseline study. I'm like Reagan, I trust, but I verify. And the purpose of the baseline study is to have the ammunition if there's something catastrophic. And I'll go back to my days as a prosecutor for the police departments. Breathylizers came out, DNA came out, Gaesnostegnus and a few other things, we had to be able to prove the science as well as the facts of the case. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public input?
I would recommend, given the amount of time Larry's been telling us, he's carried the water for the town on this project.
That's why he gets that big...
I think he's carrying the paper for the town right now.
Yeah, it's getting heavier.
Yeah.
Larry has been, you've been very helpful to this project, too. Thank you for assisting me.
Any other public input? Okay, the, Normandos is gonna push their report out by the end of the year. I would hope that the Conservation Commission could do a one-page bullet point of things that you'd like to see going forward. It mentioned some stuff, you've been a copious note taker, but we, you know, I can't remember everything every day, so just the list of things, Larry had some issues that he wanted addressed, and you did as well. So that when we go forward, we're gonna have to issue something in the form of a warrant article.
So, we've got some direction in there as to what we're gonna do and what we're gonna...
We're also gonna have a public presentation, and they're gonna bring their experts. So, we'll need to schedule that.
Yep. But the first thing that has to happen is the report has to get finalized, right?
Yes. And any amount of this that's gonna get carried over into twenty, you need to let us know ahead of time because we need to encumber anything.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do that before it's finished.
Well, let's get the report finished by the end of the month, and then I would assume the presentation would be in January.
Right, sure.
Has to be by, with the schedule.
Thank you. Travel safe. Have a nice school.
Nice.
See you.
Travel safe.
Thank you.
This is well said about the science.
Thank you.
Travel safe.
Oh, I'm sure you do. Well, I started to read this last night and said, I can't, finding too many grammatical errors and things. I'll wait till we're done, then I'll fix all of that.
Okay. If I don't see you works again, ho, ho, ho. Looking better there, young man. Gain it. Not working.
The next item of business is the signature file.
I assume you have a file for me as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think there's any value to...
Yeah, it's just to work on this.
Again, it's in line with, pretty much with, you know, again, utilizing the data that Wolfborough has, because that's really the longest data, dataset, so...
Right. Yep. Take it outside.
Thank you for your understanding.
Thank you.
Okay, first study for signature is in order to get more information from Consolidated, you need to sign a not consent, not disclosure agreement. It's pretty boilerplate, but it's just so that, the bottom line is, they don't want us to disclose the address and names of people who are clients.
Yep.
So, they'll give us coverage.
Yes.
I'll win approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's a case out of Rochester. Under the right to know.
And I guess I have to up two signatures for this one. The next is a notice of intent to cut wood on lots fifty-seven, one-two, fifty-seven, one-three, and fifty-seven, one-four.
No, it's just, just one signature. Name, sign, names, title, signature, so... I haven't run enough lines for all of this, so...
Okay, so back to the intent to cut on lots fifty-seven, one-two, fifty-seven, one-three, fifty-seven, one-four, fifty-seven, one-seven, all of which comprises thirty-seven acres on Luchel Road. I'll vote approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's getting close to my part, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, the next one is two.
No threat?
No.
Okay, okay. Robert passed eleven oh-seven.
Oh, sorry, that was a note to myself. It's because he didn't have to sign it because he's no longer our owner.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I remember, yeah, Bobby. Anyway, right to, or intent to cut for map fifty-seven, block one, lot six. I thought we just did this one, but maybe we did seven. I guess we did seven.
Yeah, map fifty-seven.
I'll vote approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And... Okay, the last is a recommendation to or for Lakes Region Planning Commission to apply for a grant for the, from you, United States Department of Agriculture, for a solid waste education and disposal study. I'll vote approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that's at no cost to the town, correct?
Right, we're just signing a letter of recommendation. That's all. In the items for discussion correspondence, Hampshire Fire Academy and EMS certified Andrew Shigori has completed his requirements for Narcan First Responder E-Learning Course.
Excuse me, that one you don't have to, thank you. It's just, there are two Manilas though, so it's not your fault.
See?
Not your fault, this one was...
This is the one that's...
Save you some time, I know you like getting out early.
Well, thank you to Andy. I hope I never use the service.
Yep, his officer saved a life for someone who was Narcan.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, Tuffboro Fire Department, Police Department was the first in the county to go with the Narcan program a few years ago.
Okay, White Mountain Survey and GW Brooks has gotten back to us on the Ninety Mile Beach project. Have you all looked at this?
Yes, I did.
Yes.
Bottom line is, with respect to timing, it's something that needs to happen in the fall rather than in the spring, right?
Because it's constantly closed, et cetera. So, I'm not sure...
So, the question was if this was something we wanted to do this year, right?
I think this year is coming to an end. I'm not sure if this, if we can get this done.
Well, my, yeah, my only concern is that it's gonna freeze up before they can get it done.
Yeah, I don't know.
And they already have one, the schedule they're on.
The word efficacious comes to mind. I mean, they can maybe get it done, it'll look okay, but it's not the best time of year to be laying, grovel down and try to...
I guess my thought when I read this thing is that if we were having this conversation two months ago...
Yep.
Or so, I don't disagree that doing it in the fall, but the, probably the appropriate approach to take is look at doing it next fall.
Right.
Especially with your background and your family's background.
He needs to stabilize that wall as far as erosion's concerned. Then you can do that in the spring.
Right.
Fill in the gaps with foam or whatever.
And the second part of the project can get done in the spring.
Right.
With the parking lot and the drainage issue there.
Are we gonna have to write a new warrant article for this, or what are we gonna do?
Well, unless we wanna encumber funds.
But I don't think we have enough to encumber.
Oh, yeah.
Do we?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah, I believe there's enough there.
Okay, well, I'll just sort of, you're superior.
So, I don't, I don't have the...
I know in the past, in the warrant article, I don't think there's...
No, there is any money left in the warrant article, but as you know, the article, money that's appropriated under a specific, special article like that can't be diverted, but you can put additional money with that and spend it on the project. And I know we do have some additional money, so I don't know off the top of my head exactly how it all comes together, but we got the additional state aid this year.
Right.
It came in, and that's...
Okay.
On that project...
Yeah.
Do we need to address, I think it was a reasonable suggestion from Mr. Lassie, should there be a set of steps or something put in?
Yeah, it's a reasonable suggestion, but we gotta go to DES for that.
Right. I think that's separate from what we're doing here.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, and...
We have to create a permit, and then whoever, Lake Mountain, whoever engineers it, is gonna engineer it, and I think it needs a lot more than what they just added.
It's not just building a staircase.
Well, it would have been fifty years ago, but it isn't today.
I understand that.
Okay, so, any other parts of this, or do we wanna hold this separate and do a new contract on this when it comes through?
I think so.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, I think we do.
To a refund.
We're gonna call this an information.
But we don't even have a price for it.
He's gonna price it.
Right, so, I guess if he priced it, then we could, then we could deal with if we had money this year, then we would apply to...
You'd either encumber or put it in the warrant, or only the other stuff.
Right. So, would you mind getting hold of him and asking him to give us a price?
Sure, so just to confirm, I'll make sure I do it anyway. What, the way he described the option sounded correct to everybody?
Doing it, doing it in the fall.
In the way that he described it?
Yes, grass, brick.
Right, yeah.
Okay, I'm getting a quote.
So, I was approached by...
And it's been green lighted by the DES.
Correct. And should I send that letter that you're speaking of to DES, affirming Lassie?
No.
That's later thing, okay.
Yeah.
I want a letter not coming from us, but from an engineering firm that we hired to do whatever it is. I mean, they're gonna want it permitted, I would think, I don't know, unless they're just gonna toss it under this.
I'll do what I need if you want me to ask, I think.
Send, did you send that to White Mountain Survey?
No.
Okay, send them a copy with just a brief statement of this was presented to this selectman, what would this entail to add it to the project?
Okay, I can do that.
And we'll find out.
Okay.
Just a tweaking of it. I would have no problem with instead of granite at the top and bottom and bricks on the side, to go with granite all the way around because granite, lengths of granite are more effective than bricks, although bricks are cheaper.
What he's talking about on the side was not brick, but it's, it's a retainer that holds brick in. It's like a brick mold or something, but it's... It's like a brick mold or something, but it's, it's a manufactured product that's used, my understanding, along the edges of brick walks to keep it from sliding out. And I.
He's not going to do it until next year.
No.
I did inquire if someone had said that what they've recommended is more than satisfactory.
Right. I guess I don't think we need to go the lily on that one, so.
I was approached by a local contractor with a plow route who does ice fishing on 19 Mile Bay, who seems to think that he can take control of that plowing so that it doesn't dig the thing up that's there now. There's some, as usual, there's some bad actors that might do whatever they can. So he'd make an effort to try to get there when it snows, get the plow, pack it down, et cetera. Add 4150 Financial Administration. This is another one of your stars, Derek. 4150 Financial Administration was not passed by the Budget Committee the last time around, was it?
This has not been gone, excuse me, this hasn't been.
That's the other one.
Yeah.
So we have Financial Administration here for us.
Oh, personnel. I think you picked out personnel.
I was looking at personnel, I'm sorry.
Someone in Pennies last year?
Yeah, the auditors are going to charge us $400 for the tax, map expenses up $100. Videotaping went up because Joe's ripping us off.
He is, he's hearing, he's turned out.
Yeah, does he? Does he have his headlights on?
No.
So it is what it is from last year. There's no, no changes.
So it's a small point, but one question I have is we had money in here for an ad hoc committee secretary. This was somebody that helped out the Lake Mountain Road Committee, which is no more. We had, we put $1,000 in the 2019 budget. We didn't need it, we didn't use it. Do we, do we really anticipate that we're going to have or need that in 2020?
I would ask that it stayed there. I want to go back to your plane crash, you know.
The last playground?
No, the point is that if someone takes sick or something, we need to fill in for someone.
That's not what that's.
Yeah, that's a different line.
Right.
That's on personnel.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, if you, if you go back and look, right, on that line, we spent money for, in 2015, 2016, that was the bulk of it. And a little bit in 2017, even less in 2018. And that, that was a, it was put in there for a specific project.
Well, I think I am in agreement that $1,000 is too much money.
Yeah.
Zero is too little, as far as I'm concerned. I would make a motion that we reduce that line to $500. I mean, I think, I could think of any number of reasons why we would need it. But the committee's members agree with me, but we do.
Well, one of the things, what I'm thinking of is four members have already talked about healthcare. What if the Budget Committee Selectmen say, let's have an ad hoc committee that solves that? We now have to borrow some money too.
Okay. So that would reduce the department line to $131,243.
And I'll move that budget.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Can Diane come in?
Yep.
Yep, sure.
My compliments to you, sir, for the last budget meeting.
While we're meeting, I'm going to ask that we review and approve the non-public minutes for December 6th at 8:50 a.m.
So I will move approval as submitted. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, the non-public minutes for 8:56.
I'll move approval. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And those are sealed. The non-public minutes for 9:02.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those are also sealed. And the non-public minutes for 10:08.
On the nine?
Second.
I think it's 9:08, isn't it?
It says 10:08 on mine.
Oh, that's at the end of the meeting. Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Is it moved as second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's, all those are approved.
Did you do the public as well?
I did not.
Okay.
But I will write this second.
All right, cool.
We have two sets of public minutes. Sorry.
It's all right.
One for Monday, December 6th, or Friday, December 6th, I'm sorry. Any?
I didn't find anything.
Changes or other reasons?
I'll move approval as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the non, the public minutes for Monday, December 9th.
I get nothing. I'll move approval. Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, those bridges. That's what we need for.
So here is the upfrontized expenditure for 2018 from the last time we talked. It's okay, Bill.
So we've got $7,000 left. Right.
$7,000?
Grand total.
This year.
This year. We budgeted. Am I looking at something?
I see the same thing.
Okay, we had budgeted $16,200.
We've expended $9,200.
We've spent $9,284, so. $6,980.
We have a commitment, we have a commitment for, I believe, for additional.
Okay, yeah, well, regarding the engineering work, I called yesterday and they said they have, they have $5,600 maximum left to do that we haven't been built yet for.
Okay.
Right.
So $5,600 needs to be found for permitting, right?
No, that's, no, I mean, the $5,600 is the work to prepare so they could go and get the permit. That's, that's for. Then the $5,000 is the cost of the permit on the next budget line.
Is it Horizon?
Horizon is going to submit the wetland permit to the state and the fees that go along with that is the $5,000. I spoke to Jack this morning.
That's in addition to what's already been spent out of the committee?
So is it $10,600?
Correct, yeah.
$10,600 that we need to spend?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't have anything under Selectmen's request.
No, because I.
We haven't requested anything yet.
Yeah, that's why, that's where.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So 10-6 needs to come out of the $7,000 that we have left over at $3,600 from somewhere else. Okay. That's what we're doing.
Yep.
Because we need to encumber.
Those monies.
Those monies, because they're not going to be done by the 1st of December, 1st of January, right?
I don't know.
I think Horizon said they would be, no?
Probably not.
Well, even if they're done, the bill won't be here, so.
Yeah, I don't think they'll be done.
Okay.
I think they'll be two.
I have two questions under docks and bridges, and I asked Jim a number of months ago to address it. First of all, every year we have ice damage to Melvin Wharf. Should we put something in there or is it somewhere else in the town budget?
I think what we, we need is stay focused on getting this year done. And then still today, we're talking about what we want to put in here for next year, so we've got this urgent.
The other question I asked him more than once was county road bridge. Needs some work and needs to be treated. And where do we put that money aside?
And do we know how much money that is?
He still hasn't gotten back to us.
Okay. What do we have?
Do we have any idea what needs to be done?
He was going to get that information.
Okay. I mean, how do we know if these were done?
Snowplows that hit it and damaged it.
Well, that's a mature claim, but we need to have a number. We can't guess.
Right.
We can guess. I mean, we're empowered to guess, but it's kind of not the best way to run a business.
I agree.
What do you have for money for us?
Well, I guess if I'm understanding your question correctly, we have $6,900 left in the total docks and bridges line for 2019. Is that what you're asking me?
No.
Okay, so, so you're showing, I'm showing 8272, so some reason that number is different?
Well, I've got here a current expenditure.
Okay. This is the sixth. Mine's dated the 13th.
Let me see what I have. I just think it was something here.
It's not posted, is that what you're saying? Has to be posted.
I have $6,915.57 on this one.
Yeah, that's correct. There's $6,900 left. Like here, the expenditure is $9,284 for 2019.
Right.
So at least $6,900, $6,915 to be precise.
And what do we have? We have available funds in the state aid.
SB 38?
SB.
Are you talking about the municipal aid?
Municipal aid.
Municipal aid?
Yeah. I think it's $34,000 off the top of my head.
Okay, so we need a spreadsheet on that. Let's, can we vote to have $5,600 put into this budget so we can encumber it, or how do you want to, how do you want to do that?
I think we, are, are we going to do the encumbrances on the 23rd?
Yeah.
So, and the main thing is we need to just, in our minds, identify where it's coming from. It's going to be, it'll be expensed where it should be, so.
Chances are by 23rd, I may get another bill from Horizon, so it's going to lower that amount, 56.
Okay, all right. But just so you know, we're going to take whatever money's needed out of municipal aid
Okay.
budget in order to satisfy the needs.
Or maybe out of a regular operating budget.
Yes.
Because we, we know we have lines that we're not going to spend on up this year.
Right, just.
The 23rd, a lot more bills will be paid, which will have more information for us.
Okay, I guess we're going to chat on the 23rd. We just need to be able to tell Diane that we're going to do something and she's going to have money to back it up.
Yep, yep. I think we can tell her that today.
All right, we're telling you that today. So if you're going to come out of unspent budget money that we currently have or it's going to come out.
With this point.
Okay, so, all right, are you then also saying that you're not ready to put together the, decide on what you want for 2020 for docks and bridges?
I, I'm ready. I mean, I don't know, or we need more information?
Right, as it stands right now, we'll need $1,600 in other highways and streets to pay for electric for Melvin, Melvin.
Right, the IC.
Yeah, and then, not Pier 19.
Yep.
And then for mowing, it'll be $510, so all, all put together against to rounding off about $1,600, $5,000.
Yep.
Right.
So we're going to need that at present.
We have no additional permitting that we're going to be doing on Melvin or 19 Mile? Or do we do any permitting on Melvin?
Lake Street.
Lake Road?
Lake Road.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, Tyler was working on both of those.
Right.
I think the conversation that you've been having is with respect to the Union Wharf.
Well, my understanding, talking with Jack this morning, is the permitting, the $5,000 permitting includes both Union Wharf and Ray.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
On board with that?
Yeah.
So going forward, if we create a warrant article to repair 19 Mile Pier, we have all the permitting done?
We will, yes.
Okay.
After this is all taken care of, yeah.
Do you have anything for docks and bridges for next year?
No, the only thing left to do is Jim still has to put those two, that one ice cluster back in at Wolf Road. I don't know if it's done yet or not. I'm going to down this out and check the bubblers, but.
Okay.
And that's covered by the.
That's covered by insurance.
Right, right. But sometimes, sometimes you got new bubblers.
No, I'm all set. They're all new now, so that's fine. That's taken care of.
And I don't, I don't have the history here in terms of the last several years, what we've done.
I know there's a few rotten boards on the Union Wharf. They're not really rotten. There's a couple ones that are getting soft, but we're just kind of waiting to see what happens with the permitting.
Right.
Before we do something better.
And Lloyd, can you, we need to have a number on the county road bridge. I mean, is, is it a $1,000? Is it $5,000?
How much is it?
So maybe we're not ready for this, but we'll be ready for it on Monday.
If we don't get the info, we don't get anything.
Well, if we, if it works, we do.
Right.
So I tell Mr. Bean that he needs to give us a number by Monday on whatever bridge work he needs to do, completely any bridge. And then we'll decide on whether we'll be able to do this. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, ATB?
Yes.
I'm just going to table it.
Yep.
I don't know if I printed out the latest updated highway budget. I think you, you're possibly already. And I didn't know where you want to, you know, what budget you want to use to pay for Ledge Hill Road and Federal Corner.
Okay, let's, let's just.
Yes. And we're looking at $5,500 for both.
$5,500 total?
For those things for?
Each, they're $5,500. You will want.
It's for the drainage study, right?
Right.
Excuse me. There's two contracts, so it's $5,500 each.
This is 10, $11,000.
$11,000, yeah.
Do they provide the studies?
Have we paid them? No.
No, this is the first bill we see.
I sent us a bill?
It is $1,375 for each.
Is there any money left on SB 35?
Yes.
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 $10,000 and something.
And we talked in our last meeting about that would be an appropriate place to put these against the additional highway aid from whatever it was two years ago.
Yeah, SB 35.
38.
Yeah, 38.
Yeah, so I've got, I've got the latest amount that is left over.
Yep. And we agreed that we would encumber whatever was left. Yep. And we agreed that we would encumber whatever was left so that Jim could do the additional culvert work, but I, I think it, it, it makes sense to spend it on, on this study.
Yeah, we have to get this done before we can figure out what we're gonna do.
For next year.
Next year, so let's, so that's a SP thirty-eight.
Do you need a motion or just go to it?
Sure.
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, I'll strike the last word. Whatever.
Yep.
Are we done with Diane?
I just have one more thing. Printer.
What?
My, I have a printer that I use to print my payroll checks and my AP checks. It, it's a special, it's a printer that I only use for that purpose because it uses magnetic ink. And that printer is twenty-plus years old, maybe, I don't know how old it is, it's very old, it's outdated. And with the new versions of Microsoft, I can't use my printer when there are updates. It, it removes the driver and then I have to either reinstall it or plug it in.
So we didn't know this before? I'm just gonna scold you cause we're on dollars. We didn't know any of this before, did I?
Oh, yes, I know about it. And I've been trying to get it fixed, but it's gonna keep happening.
Yeah.
I spoke to Porter office about it. And, and so-
What's the replacement printer cost?
I had a lot of heard that Porter proposed, it's nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. What I did is I went online and I did a comparison check. And so we could get, you know, one for four hundred and twenty on Amazon, but it costs like three hundred and sixty dollars just for the toner because it's a magnetic toner. And then we have to buy a drum which attaches to the toner because it's compatible with the type. And it ends up costing about eight hundred dollars by the time you buy the toner.
Okay, okay, okay.
And so this proposal from Mark, to me, is a no-brainer because it includes the toner.
And is that a toner contract?
And maintenance, parts and labor.
So it's a toner contract?
Hmm.
So they'll keep sending toner?
Just like the coffee, yes.
Alright, I can move to our, our poor overlord.
Second.
Second.
Yep.
And I'd like to take this out of the, you know, the twenty nineteen budget because we have the line, okay?
Get it now.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
You've overspent the computer budget for that, for administration, so that line's gonna be over anyway. It's already over. It doesn't matter. Yeah, I'm looking at it. The computer.
Well, I think she's taking that off.
Oh, you're gonna do it?
Coming out of office supplies, right.
Okay, so you've got, yeah, it's for your end, about twenty minutes, alright, okay. Hide it, we'll leave it. Don't tell anybody.
Did you hear that?
Are you done?
I'm done.
So, so the budget committee did, did not pass the personnel administration?
No, they, they actually said no to the whole budget. And I, at that point, I was exhausted with their craziness. So I just can't have them or just not have to revisit it. Cause I can't zero out that budget. I just can't have it.
Right.
If you put a dollar on every line, I don't care. But you cannot zero it out.
Right.
So we're gonna revisit that. I did some math. They're big bitches that employees aren't paying any part of the health insurance. Okay, it's December. We're not gonna renegotiate the insurance contracts in December. So I, I said I'd do a study, et cetera. But just for information, the three years prior to me coming back here to be a selectman, our health insurance went up fifteen percent.
Yes.
Since I've been back, it's gone up seven percent. And this year, I'm not taking a hundred percent of the, the credit, but this year it's gone down two percent.
Correct.
So I don't know how much more of a good job they wanna have done. And it's some sort of moral thing about employees should have to pay their health insurance, which I find totally bullshit. But at any rate, we're gonna have to revisit this. I'm gonna let them mull over it, but they're not gonna eliminate a portion of our budget. It's not happening. And that's just where I'm coming down.
Earlier I paid you a compliment, and I realized that people-
That was reasonable that night.
No, you were more than reasonable. I understand people speak in hyperbole.
Yeah.
But when you start being called a criminal, I just about came out of my seat.
Was I a criminal?
No, you weren't, sir.
I don't remember being called a criminal.
It's on the tape.
I think we, we need to bring back dueling.
There you go, yeah.
If we're gonna do that. But I mean, the whole budget, and I've been projecting forward on where we're gonna end up. We should end up, hopefully, somewhere around five hundred thousand dollars less in our operating budget this year than we were last year. I mean, I'm just not gonna fall on my sword over some moral problem that these crazy people in the budget committee have about paying health insurance. If they don't have health insurance themselves, they're making their own choices. I'm not making that choice for them. But, and I also have Karen making some phone calls to get payroll and, and health benefits from other towns for different people. But part of it's contractual too. We can't not pay our social security.
Right.
Or our retirement.
Not pay our retirement. We will lose, if we don't give health insurance to our police officers, for one, we will lose police officers.
Yes.
And then Andy can't find anybody to hire, anyone. We'll lose fire, I mean, maybe, maybe the chief will stay at the fire department, but I don't think anybody else will. It, it just doesn't make any sense. I don't think it makes any sense.
Well, the chairman is in charge of the library, and there's four employees there that are not getting a pay raise. And if they pay ten percent of their healthcare, they're taking a pay cut. That, that's not, that is not right.
Yeah, nobody knows. I mean, I don't have a problem. If they wanna do a Pyrrhic victory, we can give everybody, charge everybody ten percent for their health insurance, give everybody a two thousand dollar raise here at the same place.
Yes.
So, anyway. We need to go into a non-public before I explode. For ninety-one, Colletary, Roman World Two, Parentheticals A.
Second.
We, yes.
Marcus, and yes?
I'll be yes. Thanks for playing, Joe.
Just for the sake's purpose, okay, you're taking next week off with everything on your plate to do. So you're not working on the sixteenth, just the twenty-third.
No meetings next week.
No meeting on the sixteenth.
Really?
I'm in Chicago on the sixteenth.
Oh, you're in Chicago?
But if you guys wanna get together next Friday, that's fine.
Are you here Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, if something comes up.
I'm back Wednesday night.
We need Friday.
Thank you.
Thank you.